Recording in progress.
Good evening, thank you for coming. Would you be joining us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for its sustenance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, would you call the roll?
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ms. Mears.
Here.
Robert Icena.
Here.
Nancy Devona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Marina Noyt.
Here.
Donna McRae.
Here.
Robert Icena.
And Lisa White.
Here.
Next on the agenda is recognition. Turn to the Town Manager.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to recognize Susan Zapone and Megan Giuliano, our Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director. I'd like to extend my sincere gratitude and appreciation for their exemplary leaderships as the Finance Director and Assistant Finance Director, respectively, of the Town of Watertown. Their unwavering commitment and tireless efforts in navigating the numerous and fluid changes over the past many years have been nothing short of remarkable. Their leadership has been instrumental in streamlining operations and enhancing the efficiencies of our Finance Department. These improvements have not only benefited our team internally, but have also positively impacted our community as a whole. It is with great pride that I acknowledge the recognition that both Sue and Megan have received from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Award of Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the Town of Watertown for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2022. This is a testament to their dedication, skill, and professional acumen. This recognition by the GFOA, especially being judged by an impartial panel to meet stringent standards of the program, underscores the high level of competency and transparency they both have brought to our financial reporting. Their commitment to maintaining a spirit of full disclosure in our financial narratives not only enhances our credibility, but also serves as an inspiring example for others in their field. The certificate of achievement represents the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Attaining this accolade is a significant accomplishment, reflecting the exceptional quality of our government's management and its financial reporting. On behalf of the Town of Watertown, I extend my deepest gratitude for your outstanding service and for setting such a high standard of excellence for our financial management practices. As you know, we've gone through some changes over the last couple of years in our Finance Department, and Megan and Sue work tirelessly. They stay through their lunch hour, they work at their desks. There's a lot of things that go on that the normal public does not see. So I do have two presentations, one for Megan and one for...
Sue.
I know, Sue, thank you. I had a senior moment. And they read, "Given by the Watertown Town Council in recognition of outstanding commitment and diligence to the citizens of the Town of Watertown in your role as Assistant Finance Director and Finance Director, recognition and appreciation are hereby bestowed upon Megan Giuliano and Susan Zapone, dated Watertown, Connecticut, this fourth day of December, 2023. Signed by Mary Ann Rosa, Chair, Watertown Town Council." Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
There we go.
I'm gonna get in here.
Get in there. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, we need a motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 20, 2023 regular meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any corrections or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I'm going to abstain.
One abstention.
I'll make a motion to approve November 20, 2023 special town meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining?
Abstention.
We have one abstention. Chairman's report. We have various correspondence. One letter received with regard to the proposed industrial park, which we're referring on to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And a letter that came into our email from Mr. Mickel that had numerous questions with regard to one of the items on our agenda, which will be addressed by the Town Manager when we reach that item on the agenda. Under subcommittees, do we have anything, Mr. Ramsey, under Finance?
Sure. We did receive some financial reports from the Board of Ed in the past week or maybe two weeks. I'm sure Mark will get into our budget schedule. That will be coming up sooner than we expect. And just the reevaluation that's also going to occur for this year's taxes, so that's all.
Very good. Mr. Devona, anything under ordinance?
None.
Okay. Mr. Ratalick isn't here for Public Works.
We didn't have a meeting.
Okay. And the elderly tax relief, Jonathan?
At this point, we're waiting on a little more information from the Town Attorney and Town Manager's office before we meet again.
Okay.
Liaison report.
And yeah. Under the liaison report, I believe we have one from the Fire Department?
Yes, if I may.
Please.
Councilman Ratalick, our liaison officially to the Fire Department, can't attend tonight, he's out of state. He did forward me a memorandum regarding something that is to be read tonight into the minutes as his liaison report headed, quote, "Fire Department Highlights." To quote Mr. Lafferty, "Our recent recruitment drive has ended, and 16 new members have joined the ranks, bringing the membership to 85, up from 72 at this time last year, with 51 of the members being EMS certified. The department responded to 251 incidents in November, 200 EMS and 51 fire calls. This far, they're on a pace to surpass last year's total of 2790, 2,790 combined calls. Two residents, Peggy Anastasio and Gregory Seer, who both work for Stanley Black and Denver, nominated the department for a volunteer fire department tool giveaway in Watertown was picked to receive $2,300 worth of fire-related tools. These tools will be a great addition to the new rescue pumper engine number one, due to arrive in the next six months. A pre-construction meeting for new truck two is held on November 14 confirming the order for specifications with the building of Truck Two on track. That's the new ladder truck. The chassis is scheduled to come off the assembly line on 3/28/24 and then going to LT-1 for the ladder installation. Chief Bromley would like the Town Council to be aware that there are many residents that still think the volunteer fire department is staffed full-time. The chief is proud of the efforts of the members of the Fire Department being committed to serving the community, giving the residents the peace and mind of being safe. The chief said there are some residents that have questioned him due to his part-time outside employment have told him he should concentrate on his fire full-time chief position. When he advises them his position as chief is part-time, they state that they are sorry and didn't know that they thought the position was full-time and stated to the chief it should be full-time." End of report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town Manager's report, if you would.
So as you know, I wasn't here last week, so I do not have much to report. We did build our budget schedule for the upcoming budget meetings. We will be getting that out to you during the month of December. We are also finalizing our... Clear... yes, thank you. We have many senior moments tonight, but we're instituting our ClearGov software. We're building that. We're getting our figures correct, so I'm hoping to have that up and running by the end of December as well. Our time-in-attendance software is probably 95% built out. We're having our time-in-attendance clocks installed at five locations. At some point this week, we're expecting maybe Friday, to have that taken care of. So all those projects are continuing to move forward, and at this point, that's all I have for my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, under New Business, we have a huge amount of appointments.
I'm sorry. So in no special order, there are a whole lot of these, and I suppose we're gonna vote on them all individually, so...
Right.
Thank you for your patience. I move to appoint Karen Hoskins, 106 Porter Street, Watertown, as a member of the Commission on Aging. The appointment is to expire to the expired term of Kathy Goulet for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any question? Comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint Ray Promini, 410 Cherry Ave, Watertown, Connecticut, as a member of the Water and Sewer Authority. The appointment is to fill an unexpired term of Michael Gersino for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint John Jack Donahue, 319 Thomiston Road, Unit 36, Watertown, as a member of the Library Board of Trustees for a term to expire September 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
So we move on to reappointments. I move to reappoint Jeff Frantzen, 410 Plunges Road, Watertown, as a member of the Board of Tax Appeal Assessment Appeals. Term expires January 28.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone with a question? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining or opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Thomas Walsh, 88 Longview Ave, as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals for a term to expire January 31, 2029.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Douglas Antle, 188 Honey Hill Road, Watertown, as a member of the Building Code Board of Appeals for a term to expire January 31, 2029.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining or opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Carol Stapanic, 245 Cherry Ave, Unit C-12, Watertown, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, questions? Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Deborah DeCina, 80 Parkman Street, Oakville, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have a question or comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those abstaining? No? No abstention?
No, no abstentions.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Melanie Flaherty, 21 Neil Drive, Watertown, as a member of the Commission on Aging to term to expire January 31, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No one abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Loretta Lambert, 28 Cottage Place, Oakville, as a member of the Commission on Aging for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Edwin P. Dalton, PO Box 416, Watertown, as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Thomas Walsh, 88 Longview Ave, Watertown, as a Constable for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Theodore Miglerisi, 160 Warwick Road, Watertown, as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2029.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Stephen R. Miskey, 78 Cannon Ridge Drive, Watertown, as a member of the Economic Development Commission to expire January 31, 2029.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Margaret A. Germain, 255 Morris Town Line Road, Watertown, as a member of Park and Recreation Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Pat Rinaldi, 270 Kimberley Lane, Watertown, as a member of the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mary Ann?
Yes.
I believe you said 270, but it says 370 on here, just to make sure it's the right address.
370 is the correct address, yes.
370 is the right address?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what mine says.
Yeah, no, I might have said 270.
Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I think this one, Mayor, this Partridge Tree, I think that's Pepperidge Tree Road. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I don't know this street at all. I move to reappoint Kareem Belika, 59 Partridge Tree Road, Watertown, as a member of Park and Rec Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2027. And that might be Pepperidge Tree.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, assuming he lives in Watertown, is there any question other than the street? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint David M. Genetti, 21 Deanna Court, Watertown, as a regular member of the Police Commission for a term to expire January 31, 2029.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Carmen J. Verno, 127 Smith Pond Road, as an alternate police commission for a term to expire January 31, 2029.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Mark Guerera, 265 Pondview Drive, Watertown, as a member of the Public Buildings Committee for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Lisa Ratalick, 150 Ledgewood Road, Watertown, as a Watertown representative on the Torrington Area Health District Board for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Is there a second? We have a second?
Yes.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Edward G. Wilk, 50 Ice House Road, Watertown, as a member of the Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint James Surgden, 199 Beach Ave, Watertown, as a member of the Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to reappoint Keith Frantzen, 364 Williamson Circle, Oakville, as a member of the Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January 31, 2027.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to appoint... is this a reappointment or an appointment?
It says appointment.
Yeah. I move to appoint Janelle M. Wilk, 50 Ice House Road, as a member of the Watertown Housing Authority for a term to expire January 31, 2029.
Yeah, I think it is a reappointment.
It is a reappointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I move to reappoint Jeff Frantzen, 410 Plunges Road, Watertown, as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire January 31, 2028.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move to reappoint James Pro, 656 Linkfield Road, Watertown, as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Term to expire January 31, 2028.
Is there a second?
Second.
No questions or comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wow.
Yeah. Item B on the agenda.
All right. I move to approve a resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into and execute on behalf of the Town of Watertown a certain agreement between the Town and the State of Connecticut for the design projects entitled Master Municipal Agreement for Design Projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you have answer to some questions?
I do. So just as a quick overview of this master municipal agreement, it's basically the state's choice to kind of help us integrate and understand what the expectations are to move some of our projects forward. So this basically just standardizes our processes, sets our expectations, and it gives us the ability to work with the state, and we understand that as we move forward. There is no project that is specifically associated with the signing of this document. This has already been reviewed by our Public Works Director and the Town Attorney. We did receive questions in regards to this document being signed, and, you know, again, just to reiterate, the questions seem to be very pointed, and I'll try and go through and answer as best I can so that that person may be satisfied. But it would probably best that either he or I or he and the Public Works Director actually sit down and kind of go through this, because they're very somewhat detailed. Basically, there's a number of questions. And the first one asks about Section 4.2, and it says, "Does the DOT know that we are competent to design a project?" So competency is relevant in that if we were to have COVID come into play again and we lost two or three staff members, we would not be competent to do a design phase for this municipal agreement. If we're fully staffed and we lost our PE, that may be something that calls into question our competency to design. So it's just kind of giving us an idea that we have to meet some criteria if we were to propose a project under this agreement. In Section 5.1, the question is, "Do we use or will we use consulting engineer?" Again, that's project-specific. We do have monies in our budget to use consulting engineer, and it would be up to the Public Works Director to decide whether we would do design in-house or go outside and expense some of the money in the budget. The second... or third question is in Section 7.2, and it lists several publications, and it's asking specifically, "Are they available online?" These are all DOT documents. I did check online today, and they are all available on the DOT website if they were searched as they're listed in this document. It talks about in Section 10.2 about timesheets and what systems will be used, and it's specifically for us to document the work we're doing for a project like this. This is very specific. The Town of Watertown follows standard GAAP accounting, so we just follow that standard. We go out to bid on projects we're supposed to go to bid on. We keep records, and it's just very simple answers to those questions. Month of reports, who do they go to? That would be depending on the state organization that we're actually seeking the funding from. If it was the DOT, we may have to report to somebody in that specific department. If it was... monies had come from DAS, the Department of Administrative Services, we would then report to them. Of course, the Town would always keep a copy of our records in-house as an original. And then it, again, talks about in Section 11.1, required accounting procedures. And again, the Town of Watertown follows standard GAAP accounting. We would not deviate from that. The state is not requiring us to adopt any specific accounting procedures. And the last question is, "Will it be better for the Town to enter into this agreement?" And I would believe, after speaking with the Public Works Director and the Town Attorney, for us to streamline this process and to better understand what the expectations are to go after grant monies or bond monies, it is in the best interest for us to have a guiding document, and this would be it. We... Mr. Lukowski has also explained to me that at some point in the future, we would probably enter into other municipal agreements for like a phase of construction. And that will be things that we'll be bringing back to the council as we move forward. And that kind of answers the questions that was asked in the correspondence. And if you have further questions, I'll be happy to do my best. If not, I'm gonna call a lifeline and ask Mr. Lukowski to come up.
Counsel... any council member have a question? Counsel, any council member have a question?
Now, is this for all work that the town does to the roadways, regardless of whether we get grants by the state? This is our guideline for all types of work we're doing to our, even our, you know, not state highways or anything, just our roadways?
If it was town-funded, we would be obligated to follow our own procedures? This is when we're in cooperation with the state.
This is in cooperation only with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, only for roadways essentially, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into and execute on behalf of the Town of Watertown any and all documents necessary for the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection grant in the amount of $500,000 for the Marion A. Munson Memorial Park House revitalization project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Item D.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $5,467.77 to the police overtime account. Funds deposited into the general fund for participation in the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Item E.
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $35,000 from the proceeds of the ARPA funds received for auto theft and crime suppression. Funds to be deposited into the police overtime account.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions?
Are these funds for work we've already done, work we possibly will do in the future? What is this?
We have our answer.
Good evening, so these, we applied for a grant back in June, and we were awarded the $35,000. It's for work, it's for crime suppression related to auto theft, which we've seen an uptick around the state, and it has to be used by June 30, 2024. So usually the grant, we do the work and then we get it after the fact. This grant worked where we got the lump sum right up front, and then we can draw from that. We have to report quarterly on what we do and how we're using it. We get audited quarterly by, it's actually run through the Department of, through a whole lot of acronyms, through the state. The Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection are the one who audited us and who we report to. Lieutenant DeAndrea is the one who is responsible for that. We use it for crime suppression, but we also use it for anything related after the fact. If we had a stolen car, we have to process the car, and the detectives have to come in on overtime. Any burglary that would be related, you know, a house is broken into, and then also the cars may be stolen, we could use it for that for processing. So we're able to utilize those funds to not draw from our normal overtime account.
Great. Anybody else? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
This, I'm assuming then this is different than our ARPA funds that we received where we had the task force that allocated the months, this is a different?
Yep, this didn't come just to the town, it came to them.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $3,719.78 for tax refunds.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us tonight? Could you turn your mic?
Hi, Catherine Dunsmore, 35 Reynoldson, Watertown. I have a question about the Board of Education. Right after we had our budget vote and the voters approved the budget, the superintendent came to the town council asking for, I believe, $2.9 million, and I think it was minimum of $400,000 for health override. And at that time, the vice chair, who is now the chair, had asked the superintendent for quarterly reports, and had asked the superintendent to please provide a report in November. And I'm wondering if that report has been provided. It's not, there isn't anything on the Board of Ed financial website, anything on the website with its finances with regard to financial, this particular financial issue. And so I'm wondering if you did get a report, and if you did, if you would please share that information with us. Thank you.
I followed up with the superintendent last week, and she indicated to me that the report was ready. She was going over it with the Board of Education last Monday night and then would forward us a copy. I then got an email of 14 pages that have reports from previous month but also updated. So yes, we do have it, and we can make it available. It's not on, it would be attached.
Well, I guess we could attach it as correspondence to this, to this month's minutes. Is that helpful?
Yes, is, is the Board of Education?
But it's part of their minutes too, so you ought to be able to see it on their site.
Where does the Board of Education stand right now with regard to their budget? Are they?
I have not reviewed the 14 pages since I got it a day ago.
And so you'll attach it to?
We'll attach it to ours as correspondence, but I think if you want to see it before ours is ready, you could go on the Board of Ed website because it's got to be on theirs too.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to talk to us this evening?
Catherine Camro, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. You just nominated, or appointed a whole lot of people to boards and commissions, or basically commissions, and I just have to wonder, do you know who they are? It's kind of weird because I've never seen a person come before you and tell us why they wanted to be on a board or a commission. It's just kind of strange to me that you don't ask for that, you just reappoint people, and I have the feeling many of you don't even know who they are. If you were to see them anywhere out, you wouldn't even know who you appointed. It's very bizarre to me. So you're advertising, again, that the town council has an email address, but I'd like to know what exactly that means to a resident and what they can expect if they use it. Because in the past, when it was originally set up, I was of the impression that an email sent to that email address would be distributed to all of the members, and that's not what happened. And as a matter of fact, even the person sending the emails got no response. So can you tell me what the procedure is, what you expect to do when you're asking us to email? What exactly is going to happen to the emails? I personally want my email, if I send one, to be distributed to the entire town council because that's who it's meant for. I don't want to have to go individually to try to find people, so can you tell us how that's going to be used?
Sure, that's not a problem. I don't have the iPad yet, but I anticipate receiving it this week. It'll have the same email address as has been the email address all along, which is I did look at it this week, and that's how we came up with Mr. Mickels' letter. I need to tell you that to that address not only comes a lot of state documents, a lot of vendor documents, a lot of marketing information, dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens daily, so that when one resident sends something, we have to weed through all of that to find it. So I'm looking at maybe setting up a different way or looking at it a different way so that we can be more efficient in getting to you, but I will answer you, and please indicate on any email you send that you'd like it distributed, and I'll be sure that that's done.
So you're saying that we have to advise you that we want it distributed, it's not going to automatically go to everyone?
Normally, no, normally it wouldn't, it would come to me as chairman, as correspondence.
Okay, I just.
Anything that had to be answered, I would see to getting answered.
Okay, just to advise you, the way that it's worded about it, I think people are of the impression that the whole council sees it. So I don't know if, if going forward, if you said, you know, we have an email address to contact the chairman, maybe that would help because then people would know that they have to ask.
I don't have a problem copying everybody.
I just, I just think that's what people expect. So I also wanted to know if you could explain the procedure for filing complaints against the town manager or a town employee? Because with the police department, you know what you're doing, there's a complaint form, you know how you're supposed to proceed, but if, in the interest of transparency that you're telling us you want to be, I think there should be a policy on the website that tells us how we do that, because I know in the past, it's not really, you can't say anything here, you can't send you information, so can you come up with a policy for complaints that the residents have?
I don't know that we need a policy. If you have something, or any resident does, they can certainly put it in writing to me as chair, and I'll make sure that it reaches the proper authority.
And what if you're the proper authority, that you'll take care of it?
If it's the rest of the council, then the rest of the council will be made aware. If it's an employee, then the town manager and human resources handles it.
And the residents get to know what the outcome is of complaints?
Depends what it is. We'll deal with it as we get it.
Okay. I also wonder what your reasoning behind changing public comment and participation to the end of the meeting when it was at the beginning for so very long? Because now people cannot comment on what's on the agenda, which would mean, here we are, if there's something on the agenda that's already passed, it's already been voted on, and I think, you know, we always had the opportunity to say something because we have the opportunity to see the packet before the meeting as well, so I'm just curious why you changed it to the end, and if, you know, the most effective meetings that were held for the public were when the comment, you could, you had it at both the beginning and the end. It covered what was coming up and it covered what had happened, so you don't really need to, I would like to know what the explanation is for changing it.
We will not be having one at the begin and one at the end. It will remain at the end of the meeting. The number one purpose of this council is to conduct the town's legal business, and as a forum I attended, put on by attorneys for municipalities, they said we shouldn't even hold public participation, we should do the legal business of the town, and any resident that wanted to communicate with us should do it in writing. We didn't feel that was fair to town residents, so we want to have public participation, but we want to do our legal business first, and that's the way it'll remain.
Could you just tell me why it changed?
It changed a long time ago.
No, it just recently changed. As a matter of fact, it went back and forth and back and forth, and now it's changed, so I'm just curious.
This is the way it is, that's the end of it.
You won't tell me why you changed it?
For us, for convenience, for the smooth running of the government.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? This is our next to last meeting before the end of the year and the holidays, so if we don't see all of you before the end of the year, we wish you well in the holidays and good health in the new year. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
We are so adjourned.